So it doesn't interfere with Ms. Tiffany. Uh, first we have the public comments, uh, Ashley live vote with CareNet. You'll come forward please.
Good evening. Thank you all so much for allowing me to come. Um, I'm just wanting to update everyone and first and foremost, thank you for your support. For CareNet of Chilton County, for my family home. Um, I also wanted to kind of introduce ourselves. I don't believe that I've had the opportunity or the time to speak and share more about the services that we offer. So I have placed up there a little booklet. It's very short and sweet. Just kind of hitting the highlights and the high points. But one of the things that we offer, or two of the things we offer are pregnancy tests, licensed ultrasounds, baby boutique, parenting classes, fatherhood program. We offer grief services, unraveled roots, and maternity housing. And so I've also gotten some stats on there for you that you can look at. One of the common misconceptions of the Pregnancy Center is that all of these women are single. And that is not the case. We, over thirty percent of our clients are married. We have offered in the last year seven hundred and seventy-one parenting classes to men and women right here in Chilton County. And the other thing that I wanted to speak to is reasons that we would love their continued support. So the first is women's health care. There is no women's health care here in Chilton County. Right now, the Health Department does not offer pregnancy tests anymore. So all of the women are coming to CareNet of Chilton County, which we are grateful for. But there has been an increase in about thirty percent in our pregnancy tests. So, um, also as far as they need a proof of positive to go to the WIC office, so they can get that air, extra nourishment for baby and themselves. They have to get that and maintain that quickly. And again, you have to keep in mind, women, all women in Chilton County, they're driving north or south fifty to sixty miles to get to an OBGYN. Okay? The second thing that I wanted to bring to your attention is that we still are working with DHR. We work with DHR in ways that we can offer parenting classes, classes for, um, men and women, who maybe the state has custody of their children, but they're working towards reunification. And so we offer those services. Excuse me. We also work with the Sheriff's Department. Um, we have had deputies, we've had, um, Plankton Police Officers as well have reached out to us. If a woman is ready to leave and is in a domestic violence situation, her and/or her children, we will offer them a place to stay. It may be temporarily, meaning until they can find somewhere else to go. But if it's ten o'clock at night, one o'clock in the morning, and there's no place for them to go, again, they have to go fifty to sixty miles north or south. And so we're able to offer them, um, a safe place and a warm bed. And then lastly, we have a new initiative that we are working towards, and it's support for recently released inmates, specifically women, moms. Most of the women who are incarcerated here in Chilton County, a lot of them are moms. And so when they get out, we're working with Bell Bondsmans to kind of get that information to them, so they can, we're forming a support group, uh, to help them navigate, that's called the unraveled roots program, navigate their paths, then also work towards having a positive influence in their child's life, and working possibly towards reunification as well. Do you all have any questions for me?
Anybody have any questions? Okay. Uh, and you do know the process for asking for funds?
Yes, sir. So, um, I got the application last week by email, and we will have that turned in in time.
Okay, alright. Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Alright, have a good evening.
Thank you, Ashley.
Okay, Michael Morris, County Road sixty-one.
Is that my phone?
Nope, that might, that might. My next. Good evening. Uh, my name's Michael Morris. I pastor Mount Lion Church on County Road sixty-one. If, uh, by the way, I want to tell y'all first of all, if y'all address me or have any questions, uh, way my daddy used to explain to you after step on man, grow a toenail and scream in both ears, because I'm hard to hear. So, uh, but anyway, what I want to talk about here concerns, uh, maintenance and the flooding issues on County Road sixty-one. Especially from, uh, from, from just above, uh, Charles Jones's place to, uh, the northern end of County Road sixty-one. I'll try to be brief as I can. I'm, I'm sixty-five years old. I've lived here my whole life. My daddy used to pastor Mount Lion Church, and we've traveled that road, I have, at least twice a week, as long as I can remember, and, and more. Uh, I have friends that live up and down it and back and forth to church every week. The road at the north end, uh, the very north end, when it makes a curve off of one forty-five, there used to be a, a wooden bridge there, and it had a concrete pillar right down the center of it. And the water would come down there and go under the bridge and make a turn right alongside the county road. And if it got high enough to flood, it would come out of the creek bank and get in the road and run down the road about a hundred yards, feet or a hundred yards, maybe a couple, and then back in the creek bed. Uh, here a few years ago, they came in and paved the road, and we, we thanked the Lord for it, put in county water. We thank the Lord for that. And, uh, but as they did, they raised the road. They also took out the old bridge, it was, it was a big square hole, and replaced it with round pipe and filled in in between, and sort of restricted the water flow. And as they raised the road, uh, for instance, my nephew's yard was here, and the road was here, and they raised the road up and basically built a berm or a dam. And now his yard is lower than the road. So when the creek comes down now, with the restrictions there from the pipe, it has nowhere to go when it hits that rise, and it goes through his barn and through his shed and washes all of his stuff, tears his fence down. Uh, if you can go down through the woods and gather his stuff up, somebody else don't get it first. Uh, goes on down to Mount Zion. When I was a kid, it was just a bedrock bottom and an old dirt road.
Brother Morris, when, when was that work done?
I'm gonna say it was done about, probably close to fifteen years ago or so.
The, the, the road bed has been raised for fifteen years?
When they paved County Road sixty-one.
Okay.
Two thousand and nineteen, when?
Huh?
Was it like two thousand and nineteen?
Uh, something like that, yeah. I broke my feet up in two thousand and fifteen. It was shortly after that period. Anyway, uh, got down to Mount Zion and had a bedrock forward. People would ford the creek right there when they'd go up and down the road. And I happened to be down there working on the church or cutting grass or something other, and they were down there, and they scraped the road back and was installing pipes in the road, and Mr. Carly Ellison was a commissioner at that time, and, or, or the engineer or whatever. And he, uh, he'd come up there and he said, "What do you think about it, Morris?" I said, "Well, it's kind of sad, Carly." I said, "For all my life," I said, "we've foureded that creek, and young ones have come down here and played beside it, and people washed their cars there." I said, "And y'all putting in pipes there?" I said, "And them pipes are not going to carry the water." He said, "Oh, yeah, we've got people that studied that. It's going to carry it." I said, "No." You can't tell me. You can take a big hole and fill it in and put two or three little pipes in it or four, and it carry more water. It won't do it. And it's flooded ever since. Uh, same thing. They built the road up there. Uh, my neighbors here, it's caused water with a restriction to go up it through their yard. I think it's last, last bad time we had, they had like five, six inches of water in their house. It's never been like that before. Logs was all out inside the church yards. Never been like that before. So, uh, did the same thing with the bridge down there just below, just past County Road eight, it goes out to the old cave and old Mullin Cemetery. Took the bridge out there and put in pipe. And, uh, all this accumulates and just causes water to be restricted. And, uh, it's, it, I'm in my deepest of heart, I believe it makes it flood worse and, 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 you know, uh...
Can I ask you, if, if you talked to anybody at the Road Department about looking at that?
We had a, we had a, what was it? What, what, what do you call him, the commissioner? What was his name?
Engineer.
Engineer, I'm sorry, engineer. Uh, he came down and, uh...
When, when was this?
About three weeks ago.
Okay.
Uh, he came down and talked to Mr. Jim, our neighbor. Uh, he told my nephew that his suggestion would be to get me to allow them to run the creek through the middle of my property and to dig up my driveway and pay somebody to have it put in a different place. Uh, I believe he told, uh, uh, Mr. Watkins here that, uh, they could come down there and take it all down and put it back to like a dirt road like it was to start with, and to build a mold around his house, was his suggestion. Uh, I didn't, I didn't particularly like it, need none of those suggestions, but that's, that's what was said. Also, there's some other things going on right down the creek that I won't get into. Uh, the church built in eighteen oh four as a community center. It burned just shortly after that and was built right back. Eighteen oh four, before this state was a state. And if that's so, then that road has got to be one of the oldest roads in the state. They said, uh, American Indians used to come and stand at the windows. They had raised the windows, and they'd stand at the windows and hear the gospel preached and listen to the psalms singing and stuff at church. I don't know why they didn't come inside, but that was what the story of old folks said. They'd come and said, some of them would bring horses, and they'd tie them up out in woods and walk across the yard. And they'd stand outside and stick their head in the windows and prop in the windows and listen.
Don't mean to cut you off, but, uh, what is exactly you wanting this commission to do, Mr. Morris?
I'm wanting, uh, to get some kind of resolution to the flooding issues first.
Okay.
To the road. Uh, I don't know if it, I, they, they took, they took out the bridges and installed pipes. They, they reduced the size of the area the water could go and on, in three different areas, and all those areas flooded. They raised the road up and built berms or a dam above people's yards. Raised the roads higher than folks' yards now, and, and, uh, it's causing flooding. It's, it's a...
Do you, do you, do you think some...
School buses run up and down the road taking our children back and forth.
Do you think some of that flooding might be because we've got a lot more excess rain this year than normal?
I'm, well, it, it won't flood without rain. I'll say that. I, I know it's been worse ever since they tore the bridges out and put in pipe, because multiple times, not just this year, multiple times, I've been over there and helped rebuild and replace my nephew's fence. Multiple times, they've had problems and stuff washed out of their barns and sheds, walls washed out. It ain't, it ain't just this year. It's been multiple times over the past several years.
Well, if it's agreeable with the rest of the body, we'll instruct the engineer to give us a report on that road as what's needed.
Yes, sir.
So if that's agreeable with everybody up here, then, because I, you're, we've gotten past the five minutes, and I understand you got pictures, but I think we've got a pretty good picture from the way you've described it of the road.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming.
Sure.
Uh, yes, sir.
I'd like to see the pictures.
Yeah, I, I...
I will, um, I'll let the commission know that we had a complaint. I had a complaint called in to me. And, uh, at the time, it was, it was, it had rained, and this was not, after our wettest May, this was about in April. And that, um, that particular road, uh, it was really, really bad. So... Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, I wrote, I wrote. Yeah, yeah, I've been down there, yeah. Yeah, we, we, several, several months ago, the road had completely washed away about in the vicinity of the church. When we got the call that, uh, some residents were trapped in their home down that way. And, uh, I, I, of course, that was in the middle of the night, so it was the next morning when I, I received it, whatever, and was able to ride it. And, uh, we got out, rode around, and it was, it was badly washed, and I think the county at that time went down there and put some cones out, um, and, um, had done some stuff. I know the water runs down the edge of the road, and in a lot of places, it comes across the road and, uh, where he can, where he can see it. So I will testify to the fact that I actually have seen this, and it is, it is worth, um, taking a look at, I guess, hate to see what's, what's wood out there, so.
Okay, uh, I...
It wasn't, it, yeah, it wasn't long, it wasn't long ago we were out there. I don't know how, how long ago was that?
Okay, uh, carry on.
Couple of months ago, yeah.
Uh, next on the agenda is the sheriff.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, tonight I'll be asking for a resolution, uh, to hire our corrections officer to jail, be Ashley Blackman, Matthew Simpson, Desiree Sidney. Uh, those is corrections officers, uh, at the jail. Uh, we're taking one off. They took another job. And a reclassification of Matthew Griffin as a full-time IT investigator. I'll be asking for a resolution for those hires.
Okay.
So we take that full-time correction officer off?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Smith, yes, sir. He took another job.
Alright, any questions?
Is Matt retired?
Sir?
Is Matt retired? Alabaster?
No, sir. He left Alabaster.
He did?
Besides him playing now, so.
He's playing and isn't being full-time, he's an IT?
He's our IT. He's, he's APO certified too. It kind of throws people off when he comes out with a badge of the gun. I'll say a lot of them don't even know he's APO certified, so. He's got a white shirt, yeah, and it just throws them all off, because he's been here so long, that a lot of them don't even know he's post-certified, period, so.
I knew that you boys, but I didn't know he was there.
Alright, anything else here? Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Uh, Revenue Commissioner, Tim Little.
Good evening, my all gentlemen. I want to address everybody. Uh, some of y'all, this is your first year here, and this is my twenty-second year coming, basically last week in June. Uh, we getting ready for final settlement with the state, and I basically need the, a resolution and signature by the commission approving my actions for the previous year. Uh, some of y'all have been through this. Uh, y'all got any questions? Lay them on me.
Anybody got any questions?
We'd be signing you as chairman and to signature right here.
They owe us two cents this year.
They can't balance without it.
Well, that's interest, but anyway, the way it rounds. But anyway, thank y'all.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, Ms. Sylvia, candidate administrator.
Yes, I'd like to, um, ask for a refund to Moonlight Screen Printing, uh, for one seventy-three eighty-one. When we were doing the transition from Avenue to the state, they paid their taxes to, to Avenue. The state of Alabama billed them and, and charged them late penalties, so they paid it twice. So I want to refund the one that they paid to the state of Alabama.
Okay.
A new hire, Cassandra McGraw, full-time janitor, and add her to the payroll as full-time, uh, effective June twenty-fifth at the pay rate shown. And also ask you to approve the Alabama logo agreement for Higgins Ferry Park and pay the invoice in the amount of twenty-six ninety.
Anybody have any questions? Alright, thank you, ma'am. Uh, Christina Bullock, Animal Control.
Good evening. Um, asking to hire Hope Martin as a temporary tech one. Um, and we also give an update for the Best Friends Animal Society grant, um, that you guys approved last month. Uh, we were seven. The goal was to remove six-day animals, um, out into homes or rescues, um, within three days. We were seven animals short. Um, so they were still pretty happy with the progress. Um, there is enough money left in the grant for us to be able to do it again, so we're just gonna wait and coordinate with them on when we can do that.
Okay, very good. Any questions, Christine?
I, I do, Chairman. Uh, and I usually am, uh, at least have a conversation with a few of you before I bring something like this, but since I've got Christina here. Sometime back, the, uh, commission passed a resolution that we would turn off comments on the commissioners' webpage or Facebook or whatever. Uh, Director Bullock today asked me, could, and she has, she has the animal shelters comments turned off as well. But the organization that's come in to help her get a, animals out the front door has, uh, come up with some barriers that may, that could help the adoption process or the rescue process go a little bit faster. And that would be if we could, if the animal shelter could respond, could turn the comments on and respond, uh, to people asking about certain animals, so that they can give the information and then encourage them to come on in and adopt those animals. And I'll, uh, I'll be asking for a resolution that allow us to, or, maybe we don't need a resolution, because this resolution, uh, from, I don't know when it was signed, twenty, June twenty-twenty-four, uh, involves only the commission's website. So it doesn't dictate anything else to, about the animal website. However, I know what the intent is, is that we all turn ours, we, everybody in the county turns it off to protect us from liability. But I'll be asking for a resolution to allow the animal shelter to turn their comments on, so that she can respond to those that are looking for, uh, uh, looking to adopt.
Now, this is on their Facebook page.
This will be on the face, correct?
Yeah, that's the only social media we have.
Do you need a resolution for that?
Uh, it'd be better to have a resolution since the resolution that was passed in twenty-twenty-four, turn comments off on commission's Facebook. I think it'd, it'd just give her better cover if we do that.
So are we doing, are we doing a resolution to allow comments on all Facebook pages?
This, this ask is for the animal shelter Facebook. Uh, I don't care, which, if it's both of them. So whatever the motion is, I'll put it to, to the vote.
Yeah, so it's really hard to like, we can't post any animals out there, um, because people will try to ask about them, so we put a video. And when we do multiple photos, people can still comment under the photos, even though we turn the comments off. Um, but they're like tagging people, and we've actually had quite a few people come in because so-and-so tagged them in it. Um, especially now that we have a sixty-day limit for them. Um, it does help move them a lot quicker. We can actually engage with the public.
Well, I've had a couple people ask me, "How come you don't let them talk about the animals?"
Yeah, we get that a lot.
Because everybody else does, and I'm glad that the Commissioner Childers is gonna put that up.
You know, I'll usually find out, though, if somebody's serious, they'll pick the phone up and call you. And you'll get, you won't have to spend so much time Facebooking.
Yeah, um, today's day and age is a little different. Um, most people do use social media. A lot of people are actually, they don't even want to call and order a pizza. They'd rather just place it online.
Well, I can tell you...
A little bit different day and age, though, uh, when it comes to the social media. I prefer to talk on the phone, because I'm a yapper, but, uh, a lot of people don't.
Well, that effective Facebook page for an animal shelter is very beneficial. I can tell you for a fact, my wife and I have adopted two different puppies from East Alabama, and it was because of their Facebook page. This has been eight or ten years ago. So, uh, I'm in total agreement that that should take place.
And, uh, if any of the commissioners, I've got the minutes from twenty-twenty-four, I'm, I know, Commissioner Perkins.
He's a paper pack rat. Okay, anything else?
No, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Christina.
Alright, thank you, Christina. Okay, uh, next is Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Billingsley.
No, sir.
Commissioner Bone.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry I didn't put it on the agenda, but it was brought to my attention. Uh, since we all, since the parks are going to Rover Pass, and everything's gonna be on Rover Pass, I would like to, uh, make a res- resolution to rescind my resolution back first of the year to have paperwork turned in, since we all, since we're going to Rover Pass, and it can be emailed, or Tiffany can pull it up on Rover Pass and get the reports, if you don't mind.
Hey, it's your motion.
You got the date you originally made the motion?
I do not.
I was wondering.
But I can have it for you tomorrow, sir.
Any, anything else that's not on the agenda you want to do?
I'm good, sir.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Childers.
Billingsley.
Did, did you?
Oh, I didn't ask, I didn't ask, yeah.
Um, no, I, well, yes. Uh, this is a comment that I received about our parks. We, uh, I had a friend that go and, uh, and stay at the park over the, this past week in, at, at Manuka. And he was, he was saying that it was one of the finest camping spots, and he didn't, he didn't partake on the, uh, ATV trails. He didn't partake in that, but they were just up camping, and he says it's just one of the finest that he's been in. So congratulations to what you guys are doing up there.
Thank you.
And my update was, uh, I took advantage of, uh, Director Bullock being at, at the podium, so I, I have no other update.
Okay, do. Uh, Commissioner Hall.
No comments.
Uh, Commissioner Headley.
Not right this moment.
Commissioner Perkins.
Yes, sir. Um, first thing, and I don't know, this may be in your package. There was, uh, I'm gonna ask for a resolution tomorrow, I guess, to have a letter resent to Aldot.
Yeah, we have it.
So you got the letter? Okay, and this is, this is in, um, this has to do with the, uh, access that Dollar General is wanting on Highway one forty-five.
You're not gonna talk about the letter, Chuck?
No, I got an order I wanted to go in that makes more sense. So, so this particular letter is, has, um, the former, uh, the, the past commission had, of course, sent a letter to Aldot, and the developer of, of Dollar General is asking for an updated letter that we would rather keep that, uh, particular road, four fifty-three, as a rural, rural route road, and that, uh, we would request that the Dollar General's access be off of one forty-five. So this basically goes to the, uh, Aldot and go, or goes back to the developer, so that developer can then negotiate with Aldot. So that's what that, that's what that letter is.
So basically saying the same thing that we said before, it's just a current version.
Updated, uh, uh, date.
I, I like the way it's worded. It's fairly certain but open-ended, so I like it.
The second thing, um, and you should have this, and I don't know if the chairman wants me to read this entire agreement, uh, but I, I can, is going to authorize an agreement between the Chilton County Parks and Rec Department and the Chilton County Road Department for support services at the park. Um, one of the key things I will say in here is, uh, this is basically an agreement from where the parks, uh, work with the road department to maintain the trails and, um, keep those up. Uh, but it will, um, it will be scheduled, um, and it will not take away from current road department programs. So I wanted to make sure that that was, that was in there. So y'all should have that letter in your package, too?
Commissioner Perkins, I, I thought we, when we originally talked about that, I'm not opposed to this. I'll vote for it, but I thought originally we were talking about, um, a couple of operators coming up once a week, a dedicated day once a week. Is that, so?
That's pretty much what we're gonna do. But this is, this is, it's going coordinated between, it gives us a little leeway between the parks and them as far as doing that. It doesn't hold it in concrete that it's this particular day, unless we decide that internally. It just authorizes that we can do that.
Have you, have you talked with the engineer? Is he good with this?
Yeah, he, he wrote the letter.
Yeah, he, Heath and I sat down and went through this, and over sent it to Commissioner Perkins and Bone as the park liaisons for them to go through it, so everybody's had a, a bite of this apple.
Yeah, yeah, a lot, a lot of this came from some, uh, internal conversations and, and meetings we had between, uh, ourself and the road department about what we saw as the future for, uh, the... about what we saw as the future for, uh, the road department.
So it won't, it won't be every week. It won't be, whereas we'll be scheduled.
Yeah, that's the way it's working. It's, the way, the way it's worded is, whereas such work shall be scheduled only when the road department personnel and equipment are available and not otherwise engaged in normal or routine road maintenance or operations. But that doesn't mean that the road department on the next budgeting cycle can't hire somebody particularly for the park. So it does, it doesn't limit us in that capacity.
Well, the, the skid steer that's, I don't even know if it's gotten delivered yet.
It has not.
It's not.
It's supposed to be delivered this week.
Well, there will be a, more likely than not, I miss all, there'll be a operator hired for that particular machine. And it'll, so that'll, that'll take care of that pretty much.
Yeah, well, I, well, I typically have two people that would work that, yeah. One on the skid steer and then one had to do with the, the third part of the ask. All right, so I also ask for, uh, to accept a quote and authorize the purchase of a twenty-twenty-five Polaris Ranger uh, for around twenty-one thousand five hundred and ten with funds derived from the secret revenue source. Uh, this is to aid in the parks trail maintenance program. Um, I don't know if you want me to go how deep into the secret revenue source again, but that's some of the money that we obtained from the rental, rental stuff, so. So it's, it's not tax, it's not taxpayer money. It's the rent, it's not taxpayer money that we're using to purchase the machine or the equipment. But we will, uh, be able to benefit the parks and benefit taxpayers without having to dig into some kind of budgeted money.
It's taxpayer's money if they paid it to the county because they own it.
What, what?
This money here was
This is from the revenue source.
From the company out of Brazil on that property down there.
I understand that, but the, the county owns the land, which at its turn belongs to the taxpayers, that land does. So that money, any money that comes through this office is the taxpayer's money. Well, that's the way I see it.
Well, my, my rephrase would be it's not coming from a, a current budgeted amount on that.
From that laydown yard down there on twenty-two.
Right. The, uh, other thing is, me and, uh, Bone have talked extensively with trying to figure out what, what to do with the lake that's at Manuka. We have a unique situation at Manuka, um, where we have, we operate an OHV, uh, trail park. It's a, it's a off-road, you know, vehicle park. It also has a great campground, and it has a lake. So there's kind of a cross between an OHV park and a state park field to it, up there. So, having said that, there's a lot of things that we can do around the lake that's there. It's a seven-acre lakes. Um, was, I, I cannot remember when it was formed, but it was, it's been a minute. And, um, at that time, it was stocked with, uh, largemouth bass, standard largemouth bass, and blue gill. All right, so they, I wanna say that they put about fifty thousand of them in. All right, so we've, we've, uh, been up there and I've, I've fished several times up there and then talking to other people. And, uh, of course, a lot of the fish are real small, um, which is generally a sign of it being overpopulated. So me and Bone got together and we wanted to know, what, you know, what are we gonna do with this? To benefit, uh, the citizens of the, of the county? You know, do we wanna have it as a, as a lake where you could take your grandkids up here and enjoy the day? Or, um, you can't currently catfish because there are none in it. Um, but you can go bran fishing and bass fishing and, you know, what do we want it, what do we want it to look like? Well, the first step in finding out the population of the lake, um, is an electroshock study. So we're gonna be asking, I've got with, uh, several people, and the southeastern pond management will do this, um, to do an electroshock study to be performed on Manuka Lake. It's gonna estimate to cost around twelve hundred and twenty-seven dollars to do this. Now, we'll use it from the secret funding source, the same one that we've currently discussed. And that will give us the, um, an idea of the current population of the fish, uh, in that lake. Whether or not, uh, we need to initiate a krill limit. Uh, and, uh, then where do we go from there? Do we stock catfish in it? Uh, to allow the people to, uh, catch or, you know, catch and take, uh, lake? Um, it's in the opinion of myself from, uh, being up there on a, on a moon cycle and off-moon cycle during the spawn that, um, it's, it's either extremely overpopulated or there's not very many in it. So we, we've kinda, we just won't know until this electroshock study is done. So, uh, and, and that's what I'm gonna be asking for, is to have this study done so we can have a, uh, plan, uh, put together where to go from there to make this a, a better, you know, facility for, for fishing. You can, you know, you can have kids rodeos up there. You can do a lot of things that are associated, bringing in uh, organizations to, to do a lot of things with the pond. But, um, you don't want it to be, you know, you, you want it to be somewhere that's pleasing to go to. So that's, that's what I'm gonna ask on that, so. Uh, those are my, those are my four things. I don't think I got anything else unless I make something up, so.
We, we haven't had a pond management service on that, on that lake.
No. No, they've never, they've never done one.
I know I was, it's been there forty-five years at least.
Oh, more than.
Well, from, from, I mean, from what I gathered, when they, when they first made Manuka, whenever that was done. No, I'm talking about, since y'all took, since the county, since the county did it. Two thousand and seven, okay. Yeah, so from that point, you know, forward, there's never been any kind of management there, so.
That's a good step.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I just wanna say a little something about the parks. You know, I, I like parks. I ain't opposed to the parks, but I don't know if y'all realize it, not, we've spent over four hundred thousand dollars that wasn't in the budget for them parks. And I'm gonna keep spending if you want to. That's fine and dandy, but, you know, I ain't gonna go spending more money at the parks. I think that's more than enough. You gotta have a stopping point somewhere.
Four hundred thousand, it wasn't in the budget? Was that the claim? What, what, what wasn't in the budget just added up to four hundred thousand? That was budgeted money?
Well, I don't know.
Hundred eighty-five thousand was for a machine.
I got the commission office to look at all that.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. Hundred eighty-five thousand was a line item transfer, so that was budgeted money. So I'm just wondering where the non-budgeted four hundred thousand dollar claim is.
It wouldn't budget it for the park, though.
No, it's budgeted for the road department, and the road department partners with the park to work there, so it goes from left hand to right hand, so it's still the county money.
I understand that, but.
I'm just saying it, it was budgeted money.
Amen. But anyway, uh, just, I'm just saying, you know, we've, we've talked a lot about, um, the fairgrounds out there. You know, we could done, we could go a long ways on that. I'd really like to see money budgeted not just pull from, uh, something that ain't taxpayer's money, or from this fund, or that fund, or from the road department. But I'd like to see money budgeted next year to do something with the fairground out there. To have a, a little show barn and an exhibit center for that we used to have, or we can have a county carnival.
Right, well, and that.
And I said, and I'm fine with parks. I'm just saying.
Well, I'm not saying that wasn't in the plan either, Commissioner Haley. We, we, me and, uh, Commissioner Childers rode and looked at one of those places that y'all had talked about. I know that we went. Um, I've made multiple phone calls either to the House of Representatives and also to other people that have some interest in it, uh, to get what we can reasonably do. I mean, the first building we look at, like, ten million dollars, so that's a little out of the budget. So, um, we have taken the initial steps with, uh, Aldot about getting off the, the property there, getting access to that property, and, uh, talked to several people with Kiwanis and all these things about doing an area back there. So the, the idea that something's not being worked on or not being talked about is incorrect, because we are working on that. Well, you, you had asked us that night that, uh, Representative Smith was here and, uh, asked me and Bone to, uh, work on that, and we have, and we're doing that, so, um, there's a lot of things that can be done at the same time.
I just guess I hadn't heard anything about it, so I assumed it would, nothing getting done. I know me and the chairman, we met with, uh, Representative Smith and some board members of the, uh, Board of Education and people, and, you know, I think we more or less left there, uh, with them thinking that we were gonna have a, a show barn and some kind of exhibit thing for.
It'd be quite, to be fair, when we left there, they were gonna get us a list of facilities to go look at. And to my knowledge, I haven't been, I haven't been given any of them. I, I've got one of my own that I'll be looking at Thursday, a meeting I've gotta go to. And like I said, uh, they, Commissioner Perkins just said he getting out of Child, Commissioner Childers has gone and looked at it, uh.
But we have an opportunity to do something down there, and I think we're gonna do something, but it's not gonna be, it, it, it's not gonna be something that would bring in a huge rodeo or something like that. It's gonna end up having to be pretty much similar to what we have out there at the airport. Uh, and, but built in a way that we can add on maybe some office spaces for the, uh, for the co-op. And then add on to the shed as, as we, uh, have the funding and, and it gets a little bit bigger. We also probably need to engage Board of Education on that, uh, adjacent property. So there, there's a lot of moving parts, but, uh, Commissioner Haley, we, we've been working on it. It's just that it's not gonna be that. I'd love, I'd love what Autago Bill's got. That is a fine complex down there, but that's ten million bucks, you know.
Well, a lot of it, a lot of it is, you know, you don't say a lot about stuff until you really got something to say.
That's right.
Uh, and right now, I don't have anything to say, and I don't think either of these three.
Well, I'll just, I'll just interject that, you know, we're going around having town halls, and, you know, we are, emphasis is are put on, you know, roads and things of that magnitude, done a lot of little things, and I just want to say that, you know, we want to hear what the citizens, what, what the people, taxpayers, I have to agree. But say Haley, we're doing those things, so everything is a work in progress. But we're not, I, I, with them, we're not gonna turn deaf ears on what the public is asking for. We see things are moving. We all have projects to do. So we will not turn deaf ears on what, what the public is saying. We got one thing going, we're building at the parks, but you complaining, we wanna get the roads fixed. We have those town halls and, you know, had a great one last week. Things are getting done. However, it's not a deaf ear on those roads, ma'am. I wanna make sure you all know to the general public, it's not a deaf ear on roads.
Absolutely.
Because you see money spitting over here, and we're asking for this over there. Safety is our concern, and we want these roads fixed, as well as we want the park to be something that we can, uh, you know, utilize, okay?
Thank you. All right, uh, anything else, Commissioner Perkins?
No, sir, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, uh, back in November after I, we were elected, the the legislative, we have a legislative representative, and the ACCA has asked that we go ahead and, uh, elect a one for the coming year because the meetings will start next month. And y'all had elected me to that position, and I would like to continue that term out if, if it's agreeable with this, uh, body, but we'll need to vote on that tomorrow night.
To finish a term? Wins, is it a new term?
They, they want the term to start, the term starts, it's either June or July, and it goes through the next June. It goes through the ACCA's legislative meeting cycle. That's what it goes through. And since, uh, y'all, actually, I haven't been on the, uh, haven't been had a meeting yet, so we'll just start. Uh, and as Commissioner Hall said, we had a town hall at Maplefield last week, and it was a packed house. It was a very good town hall, and we're gonna be doing more of these. I'm working right now with, uh, some people in Verbena, next one to be in Verbena, and then we'll hopefully follow it up with the, the next one to be in Thorbsby. So watch for the dates on those. And if nobody has anything else, then we'll adjourn until tomorrow night, six thirty for our regular meeting.